Good morning, everyone, and happy St. Patrick's Day. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order today is, you get my, on March 17th, it's 8:30 a.m., we're in the community center at the, in Carson City, and we're also being streamed live. Let me get my agenda out here a second. Can we have a roll call for the record, please?
Good morning. Supervisor about? Supervisor Bonkowski? Supervisor Bagwell? Supervisor Shirk?
Here.
Mayor Crowe?
Can we call on our good friend Ken Haskins of the First Christian Church to get us started today? Good morning, the Rockin' Ribs.
Good morning to you, Mayor.
Top of the morning.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Spring is in the air, and it is a gorgeous day, and you've blessed us, and you blessed our community, Father, in so many ways. We thank you for having a city like Carson where so many people get involved and volunteer and serve, whether it's in churches, nonprofits, whether it be service clubs, we just see it, and it's a wonderful place to live. And I thank you for our leaders, our mayor and our supervisors, ask that today you'd grant them eyes that see clearly the issues and ears that hear the concerns of the people that are brought before them, and, and Father, grant them the wisdom to make good decisions on behalf of all who live here. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Sure, let's pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move on to public comment, item number five. This is the time to comment any topic that's relevant to or within the authority of this public body. We take public comment at the end of the meeting as well, and we also take comment where it's appropriate during each agenda item. So we're now in public comment. Anybody want to come up? Good morning, Hope.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Record reflect, Hope Tingle is here. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Hope Tingle, and I am here to comment on the newspaper article in the Nevada Appeal yesterday regarding the water revenues 10% below projections. Last year, we were encouraged to reduce our water usage because of the drought. As a good steward of this community and the planet I live on, I made every attempt to do that. I also recycle. I try very hard to be cognizant of the natural resources we have. So when I read this article about the potential for a rate increase based on the projections being below, what are the revenues being below projections, I was a little bit concerned about that in that my reward for reducing the usage is a potential rate increase. Additionally, my reward for being a, trying to be a good steward of this community is a 400-unit or 400-home subdivision being approved at the Schultz Ranch, additional housing being developed at Hillview and Valleyview, a 90-unit apartment complex approved for Silver Oak, and the ongoing discussion about the Lompah Ranch development. So it's hard to try to be a good steward, to do the right thing, to guard a natural resource, which is a finite resource, no matter what we think. At some point in time, the water's going to run out, and we're going to be in, in big trouble when that happens. So I'm just a little concerned about the, the whole rate increase discussion, and perhaps maybe there's a different way to calculate the rate and not necessarily increase it to the level it's been increased already. My water bill went up twice what I normally would pay during the winter time. It stayed at $62 a month during the winter, which typically it would go down to 30. So based on the flat rate and then the water usage, my, my bill has gone up. So I just am concerned about that and concerned about the growth. You and I have talked, you know, I'm very anti-growth. I miss Carson City from 1964, 1970, that time period. It was small, it was, it felt good to be here. I, I know you and I talked yesterday, and I said, maybe I'll move back to Yearington. Who knows? But anyway, that's my, my thought on it, and again, like I said, I'm, I'm just not particularly fond of, of the direction we're going as far as growth is concerned here in Carson City.
Understood. Thank you, Hope.
You're welcome. And I would stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you got to item number 34, I'd just be frustrated, and I don't want to do that, and I have to take my dog for a walk, and I probably need to go out and get a second job to supplement my income to pay for my water bill.
Your message has been received. Happy St. Patrick's Day and enjoy the walk, and we got your message. Thank you very much, Hope. Okay. All right, other public comment? Anybody? Okay, I don't see any. We're then on for possible approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of February 4th, 2016, as presented.
Motion and a second on a motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Oppose nay, carried unanimous, okay. Is there changes to the agenda?
No change, Mr. Mayor.
Board, any changes? Anybody? Unless there's an objection, then we'll take the agenda as posted. Could we now have the board recessed, or not recessed?
Mr. Mayor, one, one item.
Oh, one item, okay. All right, come back. Good thing you got a green shirt on today, or we'd...
Yeah, my apologies, Mr. Mayor. We are going to rework the, the transfer of the van to the senior center, so that would be item 18 Alpha. My apologies on that.
Okay, so you want to pull...
So we're going to pull that one today. We will bring it back probably April 7th.
All right, we'll move. Unless there's an objection, then we'll take the agenda as published with the exception of 18 Alpha, which will be pulled for the next agenda. Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right. Now let's go down to the floor and do some good things here for our employees that work very hard for us. You're on. I'm on. Morning, Sheriff.
How you doing?
I'm doing all right. You always wear green, huh?
I always wear green, just in case, just in case I forget and miss the day.
Well, you, yeah.
Even green underwear. Is that going too far?
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. All right. Could I have Jennifer Davis come up, please? Good morning. Now you know why the sheriff's up here. Jennifer works with our emergency communication services. Jennifer, this is in recognition and appreciation for all the work you do. I know you're kind of on the front line, you received the news first of anybody, and pass it on. So in recognition and appreciation for five years of continuous and dedicated service to our community, please accept this longevity award on, on our behalf for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Want to say anything? No. Come on up here.
Team of the year.
Team of the year. Team of the year. Team of the year. I should have said that. Team of the year. Okay. All right. David Whitaker. David, good morning, David. You work out at the wastewater plant, right?
Yeah.
Been, been having a little bit of construction out there, getting ready to, right?
Getting ready to start, to start today.
Good. All right, well, David, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept this longevity award in recognition for your 10 years of continuous dedicated service to Carson City. On behalf of all of us, please accept this award. Thank you very much. And come on up here and get your picture taken with us. Come on. Yeah, just come on up. Sandra. Good morning, Sandra. Good to see you this morning. How are you, Sandra Devaney?
Thank you.
How's the library doing today?
They were doing good.
You're doing good? You're reading?
All the time.
All the time?
Which book have you read this week?
Let's see, I didn't read it, but last week, what did I read? About the Dog Duke or something like that?
Okay.
I read it at kindergarten.
Did you read to the kiddos?
They read to me, too. Sandra, this is a longevity award in recognition for 20 years of continuous dedicated, continuous and dedicated service to our community. So on behalf of a grateful community, please accept our thank you for what you do, so...
Thank you, sir.
Come on up, Sandra. Come on.
Thank you.
Come on up here, up here. Thomas Gordon. Good morning, Thomas. Warehouse, how you doing this morning?
Very good. Busy, busy. Busy, busy? Yes, sir.
That's good. Work for Public Works. This is another award, a longevity award, for 20 years of continuous service. Congratulations, and on behalf of a grateful community, please accept our thanks for all the time you've put in to make Carson City a better place to live, work, and play, and just enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Come on up here. We'll now recess with the Board of Supervisors and take up the Liquor and Entertainment Board, and we'll call the Liquor and Entertainment Board to order. Let the record reflect that all the members of the Board of Supervisors are here, and also the sheriff, Sheriff Furlong is here. So we're going to take up the first item on this topic, and that is public comment. Anybody? Seeing none, then we'll move to the approval of the minutes of January 21st and February 4th. Everybody had a chance to look at them? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2016, and February, February 4th, 2016, as presented.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Let's take up item 13. This is the annual activity report for administrative citations. Lena, are you going to do this? Take us through what we've done, or what has been done.
This is the annual activity report for administrative citations that were issued in 2015, and in your packet, you will find that there was 14 first-defense administrative citations that were issued and two second-defense administrative citations and no thirds. And we did have an administrative citation appeal hearing that was held back in April. Other than that, there was no thirds or anything like that issued.
May I, Mr.? What was the result on the appeals hearing?
The result on the appeal hearing was that the decision was made to suspend the first-defense administrative citation fine of $100, provided a second citation was not issued by September 1st of 2015, and certificates of training were received by my department, as, which they were.
Okay. I got Supervisor Bonkowski questions.
Lena, can you go over the procedure or let us know when offenses drop off and you go back to a first offense, so that people are clear? When I look at this and I see 14 first offenses, two second offenses, no third offenses, at that pace, we would go through every, everyone that had a liquor license in town in a pretty short period of time, but yet we don't see the additional offenses. So can you go through that and let everybody know why they dropped back off?
Per ordinance, they are on the record for six months. So say if they were to get a first-defense citation in January, if they were to receive a second offense citation somewhere between February and June, then it would count as a second. But if they were to receive that, another citation in July, they're back at the first offense because per ordinance, it states that after six months.
So...
In addition to that, normally if a business is cited on a UDLAC operation, they will, the officers will come back the next month if they're rescheduled and hit that very same business again to ensure that they're compliant.
So my concern with this is that theoretically, a business could get an offense twice a year in perpetuity and only show first offenses. So is this something that you think that we should revisit at some point?
For the record, Kenny Furlong, we have talked about this before. It is, it is an option. The fact that we don't see a lot of thirds in this community is probably a, a credit to our businesses. Generally speaking, across the board, we get very, very good cooperation amongst the businesses. Yes, sometimes the employees will slip once in a while, Lee, but generally speaking, whether it's liquor licenses or, or other things that we are, we're associated with, our businesses are very, very cooperative with us, and I think that's why you don't see a lot of thirds. If we broaden that time period, I, I don't know that you would see any difference.
And my concern isn't the, the employee that occasionally slips up, it's the repeat offenders. And, and I don't know that we have any, but I just look at the system and go, this may not be an adequate system. So, you know, if we can put some thought into that and maybe have a conversation about whether we need to adjust this or not, and you would know best, to you at the table there, whether if you went back, say, over the last 10 years, if there's been any particular businesses that have had four, or five, six offenses during that period. If that's the case, then maybe we need to have that conversation. If that's not the case, then we're all good.
I'm thinking along the same lines. We don't know if there's any thirds because we start the whole program over every six months, and if you're going to revisit it, I don't know if that's fair either. But I think the system, the way it's set up, starting over every six months, giving me a clean record, clean bill of health, I don't think that's maybe, I don't know how other communities do it. Is this similar to other communities? I'm not sure. But I think the revisiting of the ordinance, I think, should come forward.
I'd bet for you. And Lee?
Yeah, I think we could do that. And for, for the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I also serve as the Liquor Board. I'm the appointed administrative hearings officer. So just back to Supervisor Bonkowski's original question regarding the appeal, the administrative hearing officer, for third offenses, it has to go to the administrative hearings officer. It automatically goes. So there were none of those. However, there was the one appeal. Businesses can appeal a first or second citation. But one point to make is that the, these fines in here are to the business. The employee that actually serves gets their citation, and, and the appeal is just on, for the business as to, the, the business can appeal their $100 fine for the first offense, but the, the employee that served gets the citation still. That doesn't, that, that doesn't go away when, when there's an appeal. So individually, these employees are responsible when they serve, and so the appeals that you see in the fines in here are to the business for allowing their employees to, to serve. But we are looking at some other, I know we've been working with Adriana, some other changes and issues with the process of business license, so we'll add this to the list, and I think eventually we'll need to bring a, something back to the Board of Supervisors for a discussion on that, the Liquor Board.
Other questions, concerns? Anybody?
Motion?
Motion's in order.
I move to accept the annual activity report for administrative citations issued.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, carried unanimous, okay. Thank you, Lena. Let's take up item 14, public comment. Any concluding public comment on matters dealing pertaining to Liquor and Entertainment Board? Anybody? I don't see any, then unless there's an objection, we will adjourn as the Liquor and Entertainment Board and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and take up item 17 under Parks and Recreation.
I have a disclosure.
Part, what did I say there?
17A, I have a disclosure.
Okay, you have a disclosure. On 17A, we have a disclosure. Let me, let me introduce it here first, and then you can disclose. This is a potential to approve a lease agreement between the city and the foundation for Carson City and Parks Recreation for use of the, when...
Nima.
Nima House. I should know that, and I don't. Okay, disclosures are in order.
Okay. Pursuant to NRS 281A 420 requires me to disclose conflicts of interest. Item 17A affects my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of the foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation, Inc., as I serve on the Board of Directors. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this relationship, and because this is a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from voting on this matter.
Okay. Thank you for the disclosure. Any other disclosures? Anybody? Seeing none, okay. Good morning, Mr. Mollendorf. Where's your green?
Well, it's a little bit. You know, it's kind of khaki olive green, the best I could do today.
All right, you're off the hook then. Okay.
Okay, good. That's good. I didn't think I was going to get grilled about my apparel since...
I've been waiting, that's okay, good. You're fine.
Iris said I could borrow a sweater, so... Yeah, good morning, Mayor and the Board. Roger Mollendorf, Director of Parks and Recreation, and today, along with the foundation for, for the, for the Carson City Parks and Recreation, we are asking the Board to approve a lease between the city and the foundation for the use of the Wonga Nima House, and I know everybody kind of struggles with that. I have to practice that all the time, Wonga Nima House. And just for the, I guess for the information of those who aren't familiar with the Wonga Nima House, it's an historic stone structure that's located in the east end of Carson City, or east end of Mills Park. Its address is actually 844 Solomon, but it's kind of on that sealy loop, and I think you're, most of you are aware of that house. The, that house used to be under a lease between the city and the, the former foundation, which was called the Foundation for the Betterment of Carson City Parks and Recreation. They dissolved, it's been reformed now as the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation, and they would like to continue the use of the Wonga Nima House as they've used it in the past. So we've, we've re, we've done the lease, we're bringing it back for your approval. To my left here is Iris Yalas, she's a deputy DA, and she's the author of the lease.
Ish. It's, it's adopted from the previous lease agreement that was in effect, but there are some changes.
And of course, I think you all know David Bugley. David is the president of the, of the new foundation. And so David is here in case there's any questions, I guess, about their intention, how they want to use the, the facility, and, and he could probably even talk a little bit about some of their activities, too. So with that, I guess I'll leave it open for questions by the Board.
Just one question. Who, who's maintaining the property right now?
The property is maintained by the city, by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Both internal and external?
Mainly, yeah, mostly internal and external. The, the leases, the, I guess want to call them the subleases who are currently using the facility are responsible for general housekeeping that is associated with their use.
Okay. Supervisor Shirk, then Supervisor Bonkowski.
I sent this, some questions, Roger, and I'm still kind of perplexed over the attachment of a sign to the historic building they can put up. If you could clarify that, why they can to a historic building.
Sure. Good question. That is item 15 in your lease, if you have your lease in front of you. And basically, this item is to, you know, as you know, I guess back up a little bit, the, the structure is an historic structure, and we want to, we want to maintain and preserve that status of the facility. And so currently, there are no signs, marquees or anything like that attached to the facility or to the building, and we want to make sure that it either stays like that, or if the foundation or any other future leases of the facility wanted to put some type of a sign, maybe note, notifying the public that they have the use of that facility, that it would be in keeping with the historic structure of the, of the facility. So that section's in there basically to kind to, to make sure that the leasing understands that any type of attachments to the exterior of the facility would have to be approved by the city before they could do so.
Thank you. And two other questions I had was the occupancy of the building, would there be a notice? How many people are allowed to occupy that building? And the other one was the utilities, if you have those rates.
Right, sure. The occupancy, we, we just had a check on that actually yesterday, and we found out that the occupancy is 13, which we were surprised that it's that small. It's a very small house, you know, it's only about 1,200 square feet, and so the occupancy is at 13. The question about the utilities, we went back and we checked the, the utility costs for year-to-date, and basically run about, both gas and electric run about 1,500 a year. Yep, the $680, $686 for the electrical from NV Energy, and, and actually just about $900 for Southwest Gas. Thank you, David.
Roger and Iris, I just wanted to thank you for bearing with me in the process of getting this leased in. I know I've pulled it off the agenda, I think, twice, so that we could make more changes. I'm very happy with the final document, so thank you again for all your work.
Anybody else? Well, here's one final thing. This comes from Grace Borowick, who's now looking down on us. If you look at the fourth whereas, help me, it says, "The less he desires to use the premises for charitable and civic purposes to wit, an area for local groups to display items maintaining a historic landmark." I think that should be an historic. I don't think it's either or, but maybe it is.
It depends upon who you use as your source. You want to use a New York Times-style book? You want to use the...
I think, I think you...
This is David Bugley, by the way.
Hi, David. Just take a look at it. There's twice where it appears in the lease.
We would be happy to change that.
All right, anybody want to contest that one? No? Okay, all right. Any public comments on this issue?
We've been schooled.
Schooled. I, I get schooled all the time, man, let me tell you. Okay, anybody else? Public, Board, motions in order. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make it. I move to approve a lease agreement between the city and the foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation, Inc., for use of the Wonga Nima House, incorporating the changes recommended by the mayor.
On the motion, there's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried in four with one abstention. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Iris. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's take up item 18. Public Works. We're going to pull 18A, so we'll go, take that one up. 18B, who's doing this one? Mr. Roder? This is discussing possible approval of an agreement between Carson City and La Piccolo Investments for permanent easement necessary for construction of improvements associated with the downtown improvement project, project number 031407. Mr. Roder, you want to take us through what's going on here?
Yeah, Danny Roder, for the record. Morning, Mayor, Supervisors. We've been working with the property owner, they, they're a property owner on both sides, and having them throughout the process reviewing the plans, the stage, the splash pad or fountain, whichever way you want to go there, some people don't like this word splash pad, but it, water splashes on a pad. But anyways, this is a, working to coordinate the impacts of the stage on their property, and the gist is, is that the parking lot, West of Curry, to designate six, six spots. The other thing I'll point out is there's some documentation regarding the, which section it is? Article 2, item 1D. It's really just repeating the zoning that's there. It says, it enjoys a downtown mixed-use zoning, which does not require additional parking. So even if they came in today and built a building on that, it would not require additional parking. So this is kind of just... So this is kind of just supporting what they have there now and making sure that that is continued. So if there's any questions?
We have some up here. Supervisor Rayboud.
Danny, how does the allocation of the six spots in that parking lot affect the farmer's market? Will it?
Yeah, that, that just came to my attention through the review of this. One thought we had is you would, you would leave the east-west drive aisle open, and then you would lose the drive aisle and the southern parking spaces. The alternative would be to work with the property owners, see if maybe on-street parking would be a better way to, to stripe that. These were specifically requested in these spaces. So if we wanted to change that language to review an approval by the Public Works Director and the, and the property owner, that might be one way we could work through some of those things.
Supervisor Rayboud, I would, I would also like to explore the possibility of, now that Third Street will be a pedestrian plaza, maybe if, you know, if losing some of the space for the farmer's market became a critical item, perhaps we could, you know, maybe offset that with some of the pedestrian mall area on Third.
I'm thinking maybe in that line item, we strike shall be the southern, southeastern six and less otherwise. And it reads, "The spaces allocated shall be reviewed and approved by the owner and the city." And that would allow the flexibility to work through some of those things. What, with a pedestrian plaza, what does a farmer's market look like? And, and what's the best way to do that?
So let me understand what you just said there again, that would be...
Article two, item one subsection D, says the property currently enjoys a, no, C. The city agrees to allocate six parking spaces in the parking lot located at 202 South Curry Street, APN 00311406, for the exclusive use of the residence of 310 South Carson Street, APN 00311309. It would say, "The spaces allocated shall be reviewed and approved by the owner and city," instead of "shall be the southeastern most six unless otherwise approved."
Okay. I don't know whose light was on first. Jim, do you want to go, go on then, Lord Lloyd?
Where do the residents currently park?
Either in the lot, behind the Ferkin and Fox, or elsewhere. Some of them don't, don't have vehicles right now, but it doesn't mean that the future tenants wouldn't.
So why are we accommodating residents who don't have assigned parking spaces? Now we're going to give them assigned parking spaces? I'm a little confused. Why?
Currently, there's six spaces on private property that they can use.
What private property?
This parcel.
Which parcel? On Ferkin Fox property?
Directly behind the Ferkin and Fox, yes.
Okay, that says for customers only. For customers, parking. It doesn't say residential parking. It says customer parking.
I, I've been told that that's available for use by the residents, but...
It says each spot has a sign that says customer parking. Doesn't say residential parking. So I'm questioning, why are we giving six spaces to residents who don't have assigned spaces now? I'm a little confused.
The property owner has requested it and trying to negotiate in, in working this entire project. And together on Third Street, they've requested these spaces. And we felt like it was a reasonable accommodation for the public-private partnership on, on the project.
I don't see, I don't see it that way. They don't have parking now, and now we're going to finally accommodate, this, this building has been there for many, many years without spaces designed for residential parking. I see the negotiation, I understand that. The other aspect is, when our discussion, my email back to you, if they do have these assigned spots, I think they should have, as handicap parking do, they hang something in the mirror that says they're residential, allocated to park here. For the city staff, and sheriff, and towing, and everything else, I think having the owner buy something that would, or sticker on the car that says they're legally allowed to park there would, would cut down on the, the problems and the hassle of just calling different people to come out there and give a parking citation, so.
In City Arena, they do that. You, you apply, you have to go in, you, you give them your, your proof of living there to get your, your placard. And that's something we could look at. The fact is that there's not very many of these spaces, and generally, the, the people in Carson City know each other, and generally, the people looking for these spaces know who's supposed to be there. So we can definitely look at adding, adding that to our procedures.
Yeah. I think it's well worth it. I think it's going to, to buy a sticker for the car costs twenty dollars, and just going out there one time will cost you hundreds of dollars, but that's...
Yeah, I was, I was just saying, we don't do it now because it's fairly simple, we don't have a lot, but we can, we can definitely look into that.
And I'm still confused as to why, all of a sudden today, we need to have spaces for the residential persons who live there, and they don't have them now. So where are they parking now? On the street? They must be taken care of.
Probably a combination of both. There, there is a provision in municipal code that they could request the Public Works Director to stripe spaces today for residential. So it's not something that is out of the ordinary. Residential spaces could be requested at any time and be reviewed.
Hi, good morning, Danny.
Morning.
So I'd like to understand in one, A, and B, I want to discuss maintenance. So my, my only concern is it looks wide open. And I've found in working on things is everything's good while we all agree, but when things go a little sour, then more definition is better. Do you think that we should do something similar, what you just added in the parking spaces? Should we have an agreement what that maintenance is? Because when I read this, it says that the owner has all the authority to determine the maintenance. It doesn't say agreed upon by the city, and they can give us a notice that we're in default, and then take the property back with all the improvements. So should maintenance have some type of a definition?
I don't necessarily have any issues with that. I think the, the discussion would be that, in working with the NID, would be determining those maintenance agreements and levels of service. So maybe inserting something like that would be appropriate.
I just think it would be wise that we indicate that it's a part of the NID and agreed upon, so that there's no questions later on. Maybe this property gets sold, and it's a different person who interprets this a little differently than we all intended. So if we could add a, a condition in that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Danny, are the La Piccolos receiving compensation for the easement?
No.
So they're voluntarily giving up the use of their land where the current parking is?
Correct.
For no compensation?
This is their, this is their request.
It would be a fair request then to ask for replacement parking?
Correct.
But that, that parking would be for business, not for residents. That's what they're giving up. They're giving up spaces for businesses. So if we're going to give them equal back spaces going back, back and forth, then we're going to give them spaces for business, not for residents.
It's private property, they, they could take the sign down tomorrow, so.
Okay. I think we understand the issues. All right. Any other for Board comments, questions? Anybody? Public comment?
I'm sorry.
Sure, go.
The new spaces will have signs up that says residential parking only, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And no handicap spots?
Correct.
Why no handicap?
Because it probably, not without going out there, I would say that the, the sidewalk could require AD improvements. I don't know that it does. But we're looking at the street on Curry as maybe adding a space on, on Curry that's handicapped, that's public.
In their parking lot, now they have a handicap space there. They don't need it replaced?
They haven't requested one, no.
Public comment? Bring it back here. Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve an agreement between Carson City, Nevada, and La Piccolo Investments, LLC and Nevada Limited Liability Company for a permanent easement necessary for construction of improvements associated with the downtown improvement project, project number zero three one four zero seven, with the changes as discussed today. And incorporating the changes from the late material provided us today.
Does everybody, there's a motion and a second. Everybody understand the motion? In particular, Danny, you got it?
Yep.
Okay. Ward?
I'd like to amend the motion, though.
Motion to amend is in order.
I would like the, the motion to read that the six parking, the six spaces will require vehicles parked there to have identification that there are residents of that facility, and they are allowed to park there.
There's a motion to amend. Is there a second on a motion to amend? I see no second on the motion to amend. On the primary motion, we ready for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, all right. All right. Let's take up Utility Financial Oversight issue under item eighteen C. Good morning, Ms. Engelmann, how are you?
Just fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One note, if I might, on a little different subject. "And" is always used when the word following it starts with a vowel or the sound of a vowel.
So was I right or wrong?
You were correct.
Oh, man. I hate, I hate to get that far on the weeds, but you know, Grace, I got that drilled in me so hard, man. I never, I forgot. So thanks for your, thanks for the help. Mr. Burketa, who wants to start this off? You?
Good, good morning. David Burketa, for the record. Good morning, Mayor, Supervisors. This request today is to seek direction from the Board to provide some recommendation, or a recommendation to the Utility Financial Oversight Committee, to give them an opportunity to make, to review the resolution that created the committee, and make some recommendations back to the Board for some potential changes. The resolution that formed the committee was done in late 2013, and it's a relatively new committee, so it's an opportunity to review what we, you know, what the committee has, or the scope of the committee. And Adriana, this is more of just like a legal concept, if there's anything that you wanted to add, or any comments on it?
No, if there are any questions, I can take any questions, but otherwise...
Okay. I think what's going on here, correct me if I'm wrong, Adriana, is that we need a motion to send it back for them to take, to even discuss it, because right now, if they discuss it, it's outside of their, technically outside their province of the, of the resolution. So we make this motion, goes back, then they can discuss it, and bring back any changes they think are appropriate.
That's correct. In the, in the perfect world, they would have a, a separate paragraph in the resolution that allows them to look at themselves to be able to add any duties. So what we're doing now is, since you're the creating authority, you can just send it back to them with the direction for them to look at their duties, and then come back with a recommendation of what additional duties they would like to take on. And then at that point, we would amend the resolution and add whatever additional duties they want. In addition to, you might want to put another paragraph that gives them the authority to look at their duties.
Okay. All right. Andy?
We, we did have suggested language from our deputy DA, Dan Yu, I think, is that how you, Dan Yu, new, very fine young man. And suggested language that the Utility Committee may, from time to time, as it deems necessary, consider any provision of this resolution at a meeting of this committee, and provide to the Board recommendations relating to such considerations. And that, that would have to be added to the resolution in order for us to even meet to discuss ourselves.
Okay. I've got a couple lights here, I don't know who was first, Brad, and then Jim.
So I would agree with that recommendation. I'm not sure, I'm not going to argue with the Assistant DA, but it seems like that might be a little not specific enough. But anyway, I'll let that go. Also, on paragraph four of the resolution, where it talks about vacations of seats.
Vacancies. Vacancies. Vacations, sorry.
It is, it's vacations. It's proper. Sorry, it's real estate vacating. I'd like to see that if we could maybe change that, so where it says, "Any vacancies shall be filled by the Board, and once filled, the Utility Committee member shall serve two years." I'd like to change that so that it says something to the effect of, "The Board member whose appointee vacated a membership, or shall be appointed by the Board member whose appointee vacated a membership and shall serve concurrent with the appointment of the Board member's term." So that it's not the Board as a whole that would bring forth a new member for a seat that's vacated, it would be the Board member whose member vacated the seat.
Correct. I, I understand the change you would like to see. That would, again, would have to come from the Board of Supervisors.
I'm bringing that forward right now.
And I think that that, I, I got that one. It seems as though that's the next step of this. I mean, I understand what the supervisor's saying, that's the next step, because we're not on to the actual change of the resolution right now, but I got what he's saying, so that'll get picked up somewhere, assuming the Board goes along with it. Supervisor Shirk, Jim, go.
This question's to the DA, if I may. This resolutions that's being added here, does this similar resolution need to be added to, like, say, the charter? Or anybody, any other committees? Should we have that same resolution added? Or does it need to be added?
I wouldn't know unless I looked at the specific creating authority, whether it's by resolution, or by charter, or, this is just a specific case that the Utility Finance Committee is coming and asking for permission to be able to look at their duties and recommend additional duties that they might want to do. So in essence, any other committee could come to you and say, "We want more duties, give us that authority." And they could do the same thing as they're doing, if they're allowed to do it, if they're not prohibited from doing that in statute, or in a code, or in their creating authority. But this is specific to just the Financial Utility Committee coming here, asking for more duties.
So the charter could come here and ask for more duties as well, basically?
And they could amend the charter to, to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's more than just a simple amendment to a charter. I mean, charter amendments require legislative approval.
Correct.
All right. So there, there's a statutory grounds for that one, okay. Supervisor Bagwell?
I just use them as an example.
All right, okay, I got you, I got you. Thanks, sorry.
So, sorry. Just for clarification purposes, then, all that's necessary is for us to send this direction, and that will allow them to be able to take it up as an action item on their agenda. We don't have to amend the resolution first. We can do this by action today, which will give them the authority to bring us back recommendations?
Correct. I mean, in the, like I said, in the perfect world, we would amend the resolution now for them to be able to even look at themselves, to decide whether or not they want to have additional duties. But since you are the creating authority, you can dictate or, or give them that directive to go back and look at themselves and decide what it is that they want to do, then come back with that recommendation of additional duties, in addition to language for themselves, such as what the Chair just mentioned.
And then we could pick up additional language at that time that Supervisor Bankowski's recommending. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other Board questions? Public comments? Anybody want to weigh in? All right, we ready for a motion, Board? Who wants to make a motion? Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I move to provide direction to the Utility Financial Oversight Committee to examine Resolution 2013R45A, which formally established the committee, and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for possible modification or amendments. The recommendations should include a justification of why a change is needed and why existing practices or controls are not satisfactory.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Tell your committees, thank you for the work they do. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Happy St. Patrick's
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Same to you. Okay. All right. All right. Let's take up item 19 now. We ready for that one? Laura, how are you this morning?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. You want to tell us what's going on on 19 and A?
Yep. This... Laura Tadman, for the record. This is to approve contract 1516-119 for the repair and rehabilitation of centrifuge number one at the Water Resource Recovery Facility to Andretti Separation for a not-to-exceed amount of $173,125 to be funded from the sewer capital construction account, which currently has over $11 million. And Mr. Burketa is here to answer the detailed questions.
Go ahead, David.
Good morning, again.
Good morning.
David Burketa, for the record. So, what this is, is, you know, as part of our treatment process, we have two centrifuges that help remove some of the liquid from the solids. And, you know, these pieces of equipment are over 20 years old, and we rehabilitated the first centrifuge a couple of years ago. This one actually has been delayed a couple of years, so we have to get to it. There is two components to this, and one is the rehabilitation of the piece of equipment itself. And then, what's happened is there's some new software. You know, anytime you deal with something that's 20 years old, there's now no software that controls it and runs it. So, this is an upgrade to the control system. One of the benefits of upgrading the control system is that it gives us the ability to run both centrifuges at one time. Right now, you know, we're still working on the old system, and we can only run one or the other. This will give us a chance to run both of them together, and that can be... That can add benefits for how we process and maybe make some efficiency improvements at the facility. There had been a question on this, and I want to clear this up, is there's... This is a sole source contract. It's with Andretti Separation. And when you... When you look at what a centrifuge is, it's a very highly specialized piece of equipment. It's a very large, couple-ton piece of equipment, you know, probably six, 10 feet long by, you know, six feet tall, moved around by big cranes. And it's a sole source, because really, the manufacturer have to work on these types of equipment. There's not... You don't take it to a mechanic shop, anything like that. So, when you pack it, there's a sole source letter. And one of the benefits of using Andretti's, of course, is that, you know, there comes a warranty associated with it. The warranty is six months on the rehabilitated parts or one year on new parts that we get. But, the warranty was really kind of a secondary issue. It's really just a sole source for a big piece of equipment, and I just wanted to clarify that. The other item that I... We submitted is late material, and there's some copies back there, and you each have a copy of this. And this was a request that came about when we did the C-MAR contract, the $30 million C-MAR contract, is looking at the whole scope of the funding for this project. And what you have is you have... It's very similar to like a cash flow balance. The top part shows revenues, the bottom part shows expenses. So, you can look at how we're planning on funding this project. And the reason it was brought forth with this specific item was because it's one of the element items in there under a contract. It's specific, too. So, we didn't include this in the C-MAR contract, because we think there are some efficiencies in saving the money. We can manage this project ourself, so that we don't have to pay somebody to manage it. So, there's some efficiencies in doing it, but it's still part of the scope of the funding source that we used for this project, because it's improvements made at the wastewater treatment plant. So, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have.
I've got a couple of lights up here. Supervisor Abell, then Supervisor Bonkowski.
David, first of all, this sheet, now, does the Utility Oversight Committee get to see these kind of numbers when you're going forward on a project like this?
So, this is something that we just created, so they have not seen it. We just had our Utility Financial Oversight Committee, our March meeting, and we did not have this completed. And I think to help clarify some of that issue, that's why one of the first items brought forth is, you know, to get a very solid understanding of what's to be brought forward in the Utility Financial Oversight Committee in the future.
And then, secondly, the items listed with the NA after them, starting with the $188,000 and going down that list, those are the alternate considerations that, as you go forward on fixing the plant, if there are savings you would undertake, or no?
So, the items that we have under the column that says "Board Date," what that just means is that those items were not brought forth in front of the board. And so, certain items, just depending on what the cost was, would be brought forth to board. Other items are smaller amounts, and so, we didn't bring them in front of the board. And that's just what that reflects. And it didn't show up very good on the printed version, but down toward the bottom, under the amount column, it's kind of grayed out, and there's a series of... It says, "Treatment, old facility demolition, rebuild Dynason filter." What those are is they're highlighted, because they're currently estimated amounts. But, those items are actually already in our approved capital improvement plan, so they've already been approved to be done, and that's the money that we put forth to do it. And they're in this fiscal year's budget, and so, we still have to get to those projects.
That's actually what I was referring to. So, great. Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
And David, in addition to the items that you just went over, what other items will be coming in front of us between now and, say, the end of the fiscal year or in the next 12 months?
So, the majority of them will be down here in that grayed-out area, where they show the amount like the... Well, in the next year, so we're going to be talking in two fiscal years. But, the replacement... The items that will be required are the replacement of certain pumps, odor control system improvements. Those items are listed. Now, these are the, you know, expected items that we have associated with this project. You know, we do have a line item in here for incidental costs, and, you know, we know with a project like this, as unique things may happen, that, you know, we discover, we may have to bring in support to help deal with that. So, these are the items that we know, but we do have a line item for something that, you know, just may pop up, and we need the support to do it.
On the fiscal impact, it says that there's $11 million in the account currently. With the item that's in front of us today and the additional items like the C-MAR project contract that we already approved, how much of that $11 million is committed?
I mean, that's a good question. The reason that was put in that... In this staff report is because at the C-MAR meeting, one of the questions asked is, when we list the fund account, how much money's available. So, what the $11 million was reflecting is that, at that time, there was $11 million in that account. But, that did not include encumbrances, sometimes, that take months to hit that account. So, what we have is that the $11 million is encumbered for this project, but at the time the board report was submitted, it just hasn't gone through the system yet.
And then, my last question is, under the excluded items in the contract, what is the effect of any of those? Do you think that there's going to be any cost associated with any of those items?
And thanks for bringing that up, too, because a very, very common, you know, most contracts, there's exclusions to the scope of work, and there's 10 to 12 bullet items that are listed as part of this. Most of that is very standard language that's included in their contract. It's for, like, new installations, where pieces of equipment go in, where engineering support is needed. But, there's always a bullet point in there that says, you know, if there's additional items... So, when this centrifuge goes down to the repair shop, if there's additional items needed, you know, that aren't included in the scope, there could be additional costs. That has a potential, you know, we do anticipate that we understand what needs to be repaired and rehabilitated on this equipment, but we won't know until we open it up. You know, the only way to deal with that is to do... To put a contingency in there, but we're fairly confident that we understand what needs to be repaired, and we don't anticipate that to happen. But, you know, that is an option, that that could happen.
So, David, I just wanted to thank you and staff for presenting this. I think it will help the public and all of us as we track across this whole project. So, I just want... I know it took a little bit of time to do it, but I think it will help everyone in the process. So, I just want to thank you guys for your good work.
Is the process and the process that we went through on this, is that going to be something that other departments will be able to utilize as well for tracking purposes? Does anybody happen to know?
You know, I would leave that to the... Those various department directors, but I know that, you know, what we're looking at, and especially from a communication tool to Public Works, we're getting a lot of the similar questions, and that helps us explain things, you know, more accurate to you.
But hopefully, this will be expanded to other departments as well, because this is very, very helpful.
Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Board, are we ready for a motion?
I move to approve contract number 1516-119 for the repair and rehabilitation of centrifuge number one at the Water Resource Recovery Facility to Andretti Separation, Inc. This work includes improvements to the existing controls, power system, and centrifuge number one. This work will not exceed the amount of $173,125 and is to be funded from the sewer capital construction account as provided in fiscal year 2016.
Second.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Sorry. Okay, let's... Nancy, come on up. Let's take up item 20A, the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury. Everybody has their documents in front of them. Supervisor Bonkowski, if you want to...
Yes.
Go.
Nancy, can you tell us about item 520, the water dispersment for $1,008,000 and the redevelopment revolving fund for $626,000?
Sure. Good morning, Nancy Paulson, CFO for Carson City. The redevelopment revolving expenditures include the $480,000 transfer from... To the general fund for the whole reimbursement or repayment, and $146,000 in incentive payments to the Carrington Company and Carson Southgate. The water fund, $1.8 million is made up of $380,000 for the Mountain Street Utility Rehab, approximately $700,000 for the East-West Transmission Main Project, $87,000 for the Downtown Project, $130,000 for Fiber Optic Project. It's made up of several small amounts. And then, $100,000 for internal service charge, and $166,000 for payments to the state for water, $48,000 for facility improvements.
The Fiber Optic, where is that at? That project? The 130? Where would that be set at? Or is that just citywide?
That's the Fiber Optic project, I believe, is going from Dispatch to Public Works. Yeah, Dispatch to...
Okay. Other comments? Public comments? We ready for motion? Jim, Supervisor, let's... Go ahead.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through March 4, 2016, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Now, let's take up the Id Bayley matter, 20B. Disclosure's in order. Supervisor Bagwell.
Pursuit to NRS 281A420 requires me to disclose conflict of interest. Item 20B affects my commitment at a private capacity as my son works for this company. Therefore, I will be abstaining from voting.
Okay. All right. Any other disclosures? I don't see any. Okay. Let's go.
Who works with my son?
All right. Nancy?
This is to approve task two for contract number 1415-122 with Id Bayley to perform auditing and agreed-upon procedure services for fiscal year 16. This is year two of a three-year contract that was approved by the board in March of 2015. According to NRS, local governments are required to have an annual audit of its... Their financial statements, and each year, the auditor must be designated and notification sent to the Department of Taxation by March 31st.
Questions to the board? Public comment? Who wants to make a motion?
I approve task number two for contract number 1415-122 with Id Bayley LLP to provide auditing services for fiscal year 2015-16 for a not-to-exceed amount of $93,948 and a contingency amount of $25,000 if needed for auditing additional major federal grant programs and to designate Id Bayley LLP as the auditing firm for fiscal year 2015-16.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried four ayes, one abstention. I'm getting there. Okay. Let's do 20 Charlie. This is Audit Committee's recommendation on the community facility cost recovery and employee efficiency studies. Who's doing this? Nancy?
This is to accept the Audit Committee's recommendation to approve the completed remediation plans from the community facility cost recovery and employee efficiency studies and remove these projects from the Audit Findings Tracking Summary Report. The completed remediation plans were presented and approved by the Carson City Audit Committee on November 17, 2015, and upon approval by the board, these projects will be considered closed and removed from the Audit Findings Tracking Summary Report prepared by Moss Adams.
Board, have we had a chance to look at this? Comments or discussion? Seeing none. Public comment, discussion? Motion's in order. Supervisor Bagwell, you want to do it?
I move to accept the Audit Committee's recommendation to approve the completed remediation plans from the community facility cost recovery and employee efficiency studies and remove these projects from the Audit Findings Tracking Summary Report. It will go to the other tab in the report, so we don't lose it. It just changes the tab.
There's a motion and a second by Supervisor Bonkowski on a motion discussion. On a motion, hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous. Okay. Let's take up 20D, the update on the fiscal year 2017 general fund budget. Nancy and Sher, are you guys going to both do this? Okay. All right. Go.
So, the purpose of this item is to provide the board with updates throughout the budget process, and this update is just going to focus on the general fund. The information contained in the following slides is very preliminary, as the final revenue projections from the Department of Taxation weren't released until the 15th a few days ago. And city departments have finished reviewing their base budgets, and now finance is in the process of adjusting these budgets as necessary based on the department's review. And lastly, budgets may be adjusted based on public input from the Budget Open House on April 4 and presentation of the tentative budget to the board on April 7. We prepared the preliminary FY '17 base budget based on the assumptions presented to the board on February 18, and with the following priorities: conserving conservative budgeting of revenues and expenditures, increasing ending fund balance, and to provide funding for supplemental requests and/or the capital improvement program. So, before we start to prepare the FY '17 budget, we go through and reestimate fiscal '16 to develop a more accurate base on which to build the FY '17 budget. This first slide reflects the general fund revenues. The first column is FY '15 actual. The next column is the FY '16 adjusted budget, which has been adjusted for the augmentations approved in January. The next column is the FY '16 reestimate, and the last column is FY '17, our initial projections. So, in estimating the revenues, we reviewed year-to-date revenue information through January of 2016, comparing these amounts to the prior year and the current year budget, and made adjustments as necessary to stay on the conservative side. We then use the fiscal '16 estimates to project the FY '17 revenues. In total, if you look at the FY '16 estimated revenues, the revenues projected to come in higher than budgeted due to increases in the C-tax and fire reimbursements from other entities. If you look down at property tax revenue for fiscal '17, this reflects only a 1% increase due to the property tax cap of 0.2%. For charges for services, we're estimating that landfill revenues will be down approximately $310,000 for fiscal '16. We believe the substantial weather may be a factor, and hopefully, these... We believe the substantial weather may be a factor, and hopefully, these revenues will recover as the weather gets warmer. In addition, charges for services for fiscal year '17 are projected to be down slightly from the '16 estimated due to a reduction in the internal service charge, revenue from the enterprise and special revenue funds that were approved through the cost allocation plan. So, the next slide. So, this slide has general fund, displays the general fund expenditures. The salaries and benefits were reestimated for fiscal '16 to obtain a more up-to-date picture based on approved employee contract provisions, vacancies, and payouts of retiring employees. We also work with departments to estimate amounts that might require augmentation of the current fiscal year budget. These include amounts approved by the board or the Internal Finance Committee and other expenditures that were unanticipated when we were originally preparing the fiscal '16 budget. So, looking at FY '17, you'll notice that the judicial and health expenditures are less than FY '16, and this is because fiscal '16 estimated includes a significant amount of restricted funds. And what we do is we budget those restricted funds as if we're going to spend them all in the current year, and then whatever balance is left over, those will be moved over to FY '17. For fiscal '17, Public Works is projected to be approximately 7.6% less due to an increase in the direct billing of public work salaries and benefits to various FY '17 capital projects. And sanitation is expected to increase slightly for FY '17 based on the need for cover material at the landfill to meet permit requirements. And I looked back at the five-year projections that we did during the last budget cycle, and ending fund balance is projected to be higher for both '16 and '17.
Nancy, excuse me. Can you go back to sanitation? The expense going up is for what reason?
It's for cover material, cover material at the landfill to meet permit requirements. The next slide. So, this is a breakdown of the general fund revenues. As you can see, intergovernmental revenues, which is made up of mostly C-tax and property taxes, make up 70% of the general fund revenues. And I looked back at the chart for fiscal '16, and it's basically identical. The next one, yeah. So, this is the general fund expenditures by function. By far, the largest category is for public safety, and as you can see, there are only slight changes between the two fiscal years. The blue is fiscal '16 estimated, and the red is fiscal '17 initial projections. So, this slide, we came up with the best-case scenario, and this is if C-tax comes in at 10% over fiscal '15 actuals. For the base budget, we only projected a 5% increase for fiscal '16, and then a 4% increase for '17. So, with this best-case scenario, this would give us some options for increasing ending fund balance, funding capital or departmental supplemental requests. So, if we want to increase the ending fund balance to 8.3%, this would leave us only $300,000 for supplemental and capital requests. Then the next slide, so this, in this scenario, we would increase the ending fund balance percentage to 7.33, and that would give us approximately $950,000 in supplemental and CIP funding. And then the bottom half of the slide shows if we just increase ending fund balance to 7%, and that would give us $1,150,000 for supplemental and CIP funding. So, what's next is that we'll spend the remainder of the month reviewing department revisions and supplemental and CIP requests. April 4th, we'll have the budget open house at the community center. There's going to be two sessions, one at 12:00 PM and one at 5:30. And then on April 7th, we'll have the presentation to the board of the tentative budget and the capital improvement program.
Nancy, this, we approved a contract at the landfill to improve, taking in construction materials and so forth. So, none of that's really taken into account in hopes that the landfill revenues improve, correct?
Were you, are you talking about the Douglas?
Yeah. The Tipper Contract.
Yeah.
The direct impact is going to be minimal, although we are going to do pretty aggressive business development to try and increase the amount of construction material that comes into the landfill.
And those, that has not been projected in any of these numbers yet.
And, you know, I just want to go on record as saying that my highest priority would be, you know, changing our policy on ending fund balance from 5% to 8.3% or one month's reserves. I think that it would be prudent for us to do that first and bite the bullet for a year on supplemental and capital, and then revisit those next year. But at some point, we have to take that step to change our policy to increase our ending fund balance, just as, I mean, frankly, just having one month in reserve, expenses in reserve is, is not what I would call real conservative. So, for us to just get to there, to me, is a really big step.
I just want to echo agreement with that, that you might not understand what 8.3% is, but that's only one month of cash in the bank. So, it's certainly, and the new legislative law actually allows local governments to have three months now, because everyone is recognizing in periods of downturn, one month really isn't sufficient. So, I applaud the hard work that everyone's doing to try and get us to our fiscal policy of at least having one month. Thanks.
Anybody else? This is information only and discussion. I mean, we can't take any action on it. Anybody else? Public? Anybody want to weigh in? Anybody? I don't see any. Are we ready, then, board, to move on to the next item? Okay. Then we'll close this one out, and we'll take up, thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Sherri, very much. We'll take up Health and Human Services. This is to grant permission to Carson City Health and Human Services to apply for ensuring access to quality family planning services grant from the United States Department of Health and Human Services Center. Ms. Aker, are you going to do this?
Hello, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services, and I also have with me Ronnie Gallus, who is the Clinical Services Manager. So, we're asking for permission to apply for this grant. This grant became available to Title X recipients only, so it's an additional grant from Title X. What we're looking at is a grant amount that would be under $50,000, and we're looking at improving our referral process here in Carson City, formalizing it. And then in Douglas County, we're looking at developing the feasibility and pursuing action steps for piloting a limited primary care opportunity in Douglas County. This grant does ask for a match. It asks for a 10% match, and it's this grant plus our base Title X grant, so it's 10% of that. And currently, our base grant exceeds that 10%. It's with the revenue. So, we have adequate match for both the grants.
Nikki, we're not getting into the, I mean, what do you, what do you mean when Douglas County wants a limited clinical services? I mean, what does that mean?
What?
And what does that mean to us? I mean, is that an expansion of what we're trying to do here in this community, or what?
Well, we're looking at, for Douglas County, it would be being a, a bridge between our, it's for our Title X patients, and it's being a bridge for individuals that can't get into primary care immediately. We're still encouraging our patients for, to get into primary care, but it would be within that period that they can't get in. So, we definitely still want to encourage patients to get into a primary care physician.
Okay.
And this grant will help us look at these possibilities.
I guess I just, I, that's what I'm struggling with. You know, I, I understand what you're saying. Just want to make sure that we're not.
No services. There's no services here.
Hmm?
No service.
Go ahead.
So, you know, with this type of an arrangement, individuals are still paying, and we, they're, we also still will charge insurance.
Okay. Yeah. I, I'm just curious about how far down the road you just would, I mean, is this a step towards provide, for the community, for the city, Health and Human Services to provide a more clinical services? I mean, provider, provider services? Or is, or is this just a liaison link between people who need services but can't get in? What's the level of clinical services that we're providing? I mean, I know we'll talk a little bit about it when, when we go to the Health, the Health Board, but tell me a little bit about that, if you could.
Okay. So, are you, are you referring to Carson City?
Yeah, Carson City now.
So, what we're looking at for Carson City is, we, we have a MOU with Sierra Family right now, and there's been some barriers, an MOU for referrals, and there's been some barriers that we have experienced. And this will give, this grant will give us the opportunity to have an individual that can work on those barriers with Nevada Health Centers and get a more formalized process or linkage in for our patients to get care with Sierra Family or the other primary care physicians in Carson City. So, it's working on formalizing this referral process.
Okay. So, it's not, it's not an expansion of provider services, then?
No, not in Carson City.
All right. All right. Suvaizer Bagwell.
I was just going to clarify. This grant has actually no service dollars for, for clients.
No.
Okay.
This is.
Clarify.
Yeah. This is to look at the process that we can, so we can have an individual that can work on this.
You brought in the fact that you charge insurance companies. What is your recovery rate of, of getting funds from them?
Currently, we recoup about 50% of our bill charges, which is actually pretty standard of the national averages.
So, what is your standard bill charges versus your recovery? Since you brought it up, I'm just curious.
Well, the amount varies depending on the services, so there's no average.
Yearly?
So, I don't know what the average bill would be, but can you rephrase the question, just so?
I was just curious. You can get back to me later. Overall, throughout the year, what is your yearly charge, and what do you recoup?
Certainly, I can run a report and provide you that information.
Let all board members know.
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay. Other board questions? Comments? Public comments? Questions? Who wants to make a motion? Suvaizer Bagwell, go.
I move to grant permission for Carson City Health and Human Services to apply for the ensuring access to quality family planning services grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Centers, Office of the Secretary, Office of the Assistant Secretary for Health, Office of Population Affairs.
There's a motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Thanks, Ronnie. Thanks, Nikki. Okay. All right. We're ready to take a recess here. Let's be in recess for about 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene as the board of health.
[Music]
All the order and roll call for the Board of Health for March 17th, 2016. Thank you very much.
We're aging.
Actually, we are that age.
Yeah, I am. I don't know about you people, but the mayor, of course, is a young buck.
Right, right, yeah, man.
All right, roll call, please.
Member about?
Here.
Member Bonkowski?
Here.
Member Bagwell?
Here.
Member Shirk?
Here.
Vice Chair Kroll?
Here.
Chair Pintar, Dr. Pintar? We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain public comment on whatever the public wishes to comment on at this point, pertinent to the Board of Health, I might add. Seeing none, we will go on to approval of minutes of possible action there.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Health for January 21st, 2016, with a correction to the meeting date in the second line.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes with this mild correction is suggested. Any discussion, opposition? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We will go on to item 26A, which is my report. Oh, okay, there we go. All right, well, a couple, three things, actually. Angela and I, Angela Baroso, who is our Preparedness Manager, are working on establishing a healthcare coalition for Carson City. It's a model that has worked successfully in other counties, and basically, it's getting together all the representatives of all the players of any sort of healthcare-related function. This would include EMS, for example, you know, the, who answers the phones?
Dispatch.
Dispatch, thank you. Come on, you know, all, that's all I had to do. Home healthcare agencies, extended care facilities, all of those people in the county who provide healthcare in various ways, get them basically at the same table, looking at each other, talking about what they do, what they don't do, and I, you know, it's, it's worked successfully other places. I would like to get it going, so Angela and I are pinching a few behinds, as Ruthie would say, to get that going, so just.
Don't get me in trouble.
Yeah, I won't. All right, I also wanted to mention that many of us should receive something called the Nevada Community Needs Assessment. It'll be sent from the state via email. It's, what they ask you to do is rank 12 issues by order of importance to your community, and I'm not going to give you any ideas as to how you should do that. I think that part of the role of the Board of Health has been to educate ourselves and the public about what the needs are in our community, but I would strongly encourage you to participate in this because this is one of the major ways the state is deciding how to allocate their public health dollars. And third, work for the next legislative session is beginning. Nikki and I will be meeting with Assemblyman Oskerson and some state officials at the end of this month to discuss some public health needs as well, so if there are particular concerns that you would like me to bring to that meeting, I would be glad to do so. The end. I guess you have to approve that.
I move to accept the health officer's report. Period.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will go on to 26B, the Director's Report for Carson City Health and Human Services. Ms. Nikki?
Good morning, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. So first, I want to report on January 28th, we had our point in time count, and you can see the numbers up here on the screen. I just want to point out that this was done a little differently this year, and we had a resource fair along with it, which on the stats, it's the community center event, that's is relating to that resource fair. So we had resource agencies, there were 16 of them there, and then as far as the school count, what I want to give just some insight as what it means to be doubled up. That means staying with friends or family. And then unsheltered means that they're residing in a place not meant for human, for humans to live in. And then unaccom, unaccompli, whoa, un. Yeah, it's, it's individuals under 18 that are living apart from their parents or guardians. So I just wanted to clarify some of those definitions for you.
Can I ask you a question? How was that point in time count conducted?
So what we did this year was Deacon Craig did the actual, the street count, and then the interviews were conducted at the resource fair, and then the school count comes from the school.
When Deacon Craig does the street count, where does he go? Does he go down to the river? Does he go to motels? Where does he go?
He, he knows where those encampments are, and he's very well aware.
Oh, look who showed up. The city is divided into sections, and Deacon Craig and his helpers take basically a sort of a sweep approach through these different sections, so all the different sections of the city are included, and he, he does do special attention to the areas where we know the homeless stay. So I, I feel pretty certain that it's a fairly comprehensive evaluation of geographically the entire city.
Good, thank you.
Question. What was the point in time, what was it last year? What was the street count last year?
I've got it. MJ is actually in Washington, DC at a conference. So last year, there were 58 encampments, so 58 little camps. The school numbers were a total of 446, doubling up, there was 387. The, the school children living in motels was 24. The, the youth living in shelters was 19. The youth unsheltered was eight, and then they had another category.
Why, why do you see the, the drop in the numbers? What do you think that, why is that happening? It's a good thing, but why?
You know, this is a, a one-day count, so really, I mean, there's a little bit of drop in the school count. I mean, it could be, it could be.
I'm not sure statistically if it's truly as much of a drop when you look at that. I mean, it sounds like the numbers, but when, when I speak to some of the social service agencies, they're, the economy has improved enough that there is some improvement there, and for example, with the job fair, there's less, less people needing, needing jobs overall. However, the homeless count numbers, because they're small, it's very difficult to say statistically, is there a significant drop or not? And, and as Nikki pointed out, it is that one point in time. Two years ago, it was conducted on a day that had a severe snowstorm, and so the numbers were low because people were inside, presumably, people were inside casinos as opposed to out in their makeshift shelters, so it is what it is. I don't know that it's comparable year to year very ideally.
And we got some feedback this year on the actual street count that Deacon Craig knew of encampments, but when he went out there, the people weren't there, but he, he knew in the past that people had been living there, so.
So when you say encampment, is that one person or a group of people?
It could be either. It's, I mean, it's, it's a place where individuals have, has basically set up their camp, so it could be one individual living in that little camp, it could be a group.
All right, so the street count, is it per person or per encampment?
The actual street count is per person. The encampment is individual camps. Okay, and to touch real briefly, we had a job fair on February 26th, and the number of employers was 39. We did look this time and asked people who were currently employed, so we could get a sense of who was employed but looking for other work, so it could be someone that was part-time employed looking for full-time, so we wanted that figure this year. And, and then you see there were 362 job seekers, 275 from Carson City.
The recent unemployment numbers came out, and if I read them right, it says that we dropped 300 jobs. Did you read that as well? I mean, I, I didn't, I'm.
In the county?
In the county, and I don't know how that would happen. I mean, over one month. Anybody?
Yeah, I don't have insight into that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, on our clinical services side, this graph here shows the unduplicated number of female patients in our family planning clinic. The total number this year was 1,893. For the last three years, the females that we've been seeing, it accounts for about 86% of those family planning appointments. We had a slight drop from 2014 to 2015. It was approximately 1.8%, which is very minimal compared to what other clinics have seen across the nation. And then I just want to point out real briefly that you can see what are the age group that we mainly see. This is our unduplicated male patients that are presenting to our family planning clinic, and in 2015, the total was 261 patients. Historically, over the past three years, we've been seeing around 12 to 14% males, and there was a very slight decrease from 2014 to 2015, only about 14 patients. And again, you can see what age group we're seeing mostly. This slide shows you the income level of the patients that we're seeing. So 71% or 1,345 were below the 100% of federal poverty level, and you can see the other breakdowns. So you can see most of our patients are below that 100%. This slide just shows where we're at as far as the uninsured. You can see that the uninsured are decreasing within our clinics, so we went from about in 2013, 81% being uninsured, to in 2015, 61% being uninsured. You can see that our, the public insurance, which is like Medicaid, that it has increased from 11.6% in 2013 to 27% in 2015. Of course, that's with our Affordable Care Act and the Medicaid expansion. Our private insurance in 2013 was 7.4%, and it's at 12% in 2015.
Nikki, if you don't mind, those that are coming in uninsured, are we getting them signed up on the spot?
We have someone come in. We don't do it on the spot. We do have someone come in to the facility that helps sign patients up for Medicaid, and so we're, because of the way our clinic is set up, we, when they come in for their appointment right then, we don't sign them up, but we definitely have someone that comes into our facility to help with that and encouraging patient, we do encourage patients to get signed up.
Hi, this is Ronnie Galis, Clinical Services Manager. Yeah, up until actually September of 2015, we were in collaboration with the state, and we had enrollment assisters onsite only one day a week based on our percentages versus percentages of. percentages across other areas in the state. So we did have somebody one day a week. Since September, we basically rely on a volunteer that we have in the Human Services Department. But I recently learned at a meeting about three weeks ago that Medicaid is actually, they've had a whole system change in their processes. And it's pretty amazing in the past, when people waited three hours to talk to a Medicaid person, the calls are being answered in 10 minutes. But anyway, they're doing, they're doing amazing system changes. And as part of that, they're offering to have workers come to actual sites that can show that you, you have to prove and show that you have enough people to make it worth their time and effort to send a staff person. So I'm right now in an email conversation with the folks to see if I can get an actual worker from Medicaid onsite. But right now, we are lacking that ability. The only person we have is a volunteer.
And then along that same line, with the uninsured coming in, how does that tie into Obamacare, the insurance that we, that is mandated that citizens have? How does that tie, correlate together? Or do we even look at it as we do Medicare as well?
We, yes, everybody is supposed to have insurance. Reality is that not everybody does. You still have, there's individuals that are undocumented that do not have insurance. And then there are individuals that, if you look out on the exchange, the insurance is expensive and some families can't afford this insurance. Now, when we have these uninsured individuals coming in, yes, we are asking for an amount to be paid. You know, so we do ask for an amount. We do it on a sliding scale. There are some times that individuals just cannot pay.
Okay. You mentioned undocumented. How does that relate to anything and what does that mean to us?
That means that we've got individuals within our community, within the United States, that are not residents of the United States.
Well, specifically Carson City. United States, I get it. Okay. How does that affect us, the bottom line and the funding mechanism if we're giving services to undocumented citizens or non-citizens, however you want to put that? I mean, where's it, do we draw a line at any point and say, you're not a citizen, you don't get this?
I think that, you know, it's something that we deal with, with the hospital deals with. And I think that there at Carson City Health and Human Services, it's a service to provide to the individuals that helps the health of the community. You know, we're having them come in for family planning services so we don't have unintended pregnancies that impact the community as a whole, which would impact our social, could impact our social service budgets. It impacts the hospital. It impacts the health of the community. And aside from family planning, you know, we have our emusations. We ask for money upfront there. We have uninsured that come through that. Again, we're protecting our community by still providing that service. We do ask for a fee, but we provide that service to protect the health of our community.
How many undocumented people come through? Do you track that?
We do not ask for that information. So we do not know that.
Ronnie, and maybe I'm wrong, but could you tell us a little bit about the Title X requirements? I believe that Title X specifies that that information not be.
Yeah, the different services, so our Title X funding that we get says we cannot discriminate for basically any reason. And the vaccines for children's program, which is also a federal program that provides free vaccine to folks that are uninsured, underinsured, Native American, Pacific Islander, the vaccines are provided for free. And that as well, you can't ask, you know, there's no stipulation. The stipulation is whether you're uninsured, underinsured, and we can't ask folks, you know, are you documented or undocumented and refuse services to those vaccines if someone is undocumented.
And let me just clarify, when we talk about Title X, we're talking family planning.
I don't know that I'm interpreting exactly right, but it does bring up the question, how much, or should we be measuring the impact of the undocumented in this community for the services that we are providing? What is the impact?
I think it's a legitimate question. Well, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, but because our primary funding for the family planning clinic is Title X federal monies, we're not allowed to. We, Health and Human Services Clinic is not allowed to do that, to ask if they're documented or undocumented. So as long as that money, and that Title X money is, supports that clinic.
Is it that Title X says you can't get service based on whether they're documented or not? But does it actually say you can't keep a statistic? I would think it says you can't discriminate. So can we have a finer detail on that?
Yeah, you know, that actually, I mean, that's a great question. And one of those questions, you know, when you operate a certain way for so long and then you say, okay, well, let's go back and relook at, you know, what the language is. So it's my understanding, but yeah, but I certainly would be happy to go back and relook at the language and clarify whether it says, whether it says you can't ask or don't ask, or whether it says you can't discriminate based on, which would have two totally different interpretations. And you're right.
Well, if I may, since I brought the subject up, I appreciate what you're doing, but I hope you will email all board members that, but I wonder if it's something the DA could look at as well, or should we ask them to look at it?
It's up to the board.
I think from the standpoint of helping Ronnie clarify our interpretation of the grant language, that would be appropriate. You have access to that Title X grant. So, yeah, and if you could weigh in on how we are interpreting that locally, I think that would be very useful for subsequent report.
And then the final question is the funding from this was mentioned, it came from the federal. Is there any local or state funding for this, services that we're providing?
No, it's through our federal. And it comes, it doesn't come through the state. It comes directly from the federal government. And we actually do have a match on that grant. It's 10% and we have, we have well above the 10% match on that. It's the revenues that come in.
Clinical Services is funded. My department gets about $95,000 a year, don't quote me on that exact number, in general fund. It funds 50% of my position. It funds 30% of one of the nurses in the clinic that are providing services. Percent-wise, you know, I'd have to double check, but it's, I know we're 60%, I know Clinical Services is 60% grant-funded and 40% other. And then the other funding would be the general fund plus the revenue that we collect from Medicaid insurance that goes back into the program. So 40% of it does come from revenue generated from the public as well as specific budgeted general fund dollars.
I hate to labor on it now, but this, you received $95,000 from the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Which then goes for the use of providing services, however you want to put it, to undocumented. Correct?
Well, yeah. I mean, we, like I said, we don't discriminate whether somebody's documented or undocumented. So yes, a portion of the funds that we receive that is either general fund or grant fund does go towards providing services to those members of, in our communities.
Thank you.
And these are for the services of, you know, the family planning and immunization. So.
Which are the only clinical services provided in our public health realm.
Moving on, then I'm going to have Dustin talk a little bit about our epidemiology program.
For the record, Dustin Booth, on the slide here, I just wanted to show a trend since 2012 in regard to salmonellosis, both in Carson, Dulles and Lyon. And you could see last year, we had the purple line there, or the region is the purple line, but all three counties saw an increase. Salmonellosis is a condition caused by salmonella. There are about 2,500 different serotypes of salmonella. And so one of the things that we utilize is our state lab to differentiate between the different types of salmonella. So that process is called PFGE or pulse field gel electrophoresis. And so when we look at all these, even though we saw an increase, there was really only one outbreak locally that was tied to this. It just was in the region, we saw a lot of salmonella cases, but only one of them was linked to a local outbreak, which we reported at the last Board of Health, which occurred in December. Turkey time, well, actually, fresh produce is one of the leading cause of foodborne illness. So changing of diets, where, you know, even though produce is great for us, but it also can have some risks because it could be contaminated at the source. So that's one of the reasons why we see, we've probably seen an increase over the time is our changing diets. Here I wanted to talk about our, here in Carson City, last year, we saw 27 complaints against food establishments. Of those 27 complaints, 12 were confirmed and 15 were unconfirmed and two of them were issued an official notice. This was a 35% increase from the previous year. 37% were in the category insects, rodents and animals. And that was where one of the notices was issued versus only 11% in 2014. So it's a general category where that falls into, but a lot of the complaints that we get are, specifically last year, we got were dogs in grocery stores. So we did issue probably just a written notice onsite that this was observed, that we saw a dog in the establishment. It's the operator's responsibility to make sure that only service animals are allowed in there and your pets are not allowed in the establishment. We also saw, one of the other notices was improper food handling was observed during the follow-up. So we received a complaint of improper food handling. We went out there, we observed that. And so we put, you know, give them a written notice that they needed to correct that, most likely probably due to bare hand contact, that somebody was touching, ready to eat foods without gloves or using deli paper or tongs.
And in our public health preparedness, there's a lot of information on this slide. It shows you what activities have been taking place. Just some highlights are that there, the division is working on a West Region Medical Search Plan and Healthcare Evacuation Annex. They're also working on the Regional Isolation and Quarantine Plan and Bench Book. We have trained staff on the Incident Action Plan within the Health Department. And there's a, the Fifth Annual Rules Preparedness Summit in Fallon, June 21st and 25th. We're helping plan that event. And they recently just finalized the Infectious Control Plan for East Fork Fire Emergency Management System. So those are just some highlights. I've got more on this slide that you can see there, a very busy group. So within our Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion, over spring break, we're going to have some sessions at the Health Department. One is our Be Proud, Be Responsible. We've brought these different programs to the Board of Health at different times. And we'll have that, like I said, March 28th and 29th. We're also having our FAT, our Promoting Health Among Teams, which is abstinence only, and that will run March 28th through the 31st. So if you know of anybody within those age groups that is interested in attending these, get in contact with us. So, and the program is working on their marketing plan. And they recently went to a Train the Trainer, hanging out or hooking up. They're very excited coming back from that, so got some good ideas.
Nikki, are you working with our library to actually promote this event? Because they really reach out to that youth group. So just as an idea to hook into that, because they certainly work with that age group.
I'll let Valerie, who oversees this program, speak to that.
For the record, Valerie Quape, Carson City Health and Human Services Coordinator for the AHIP programs. Actually, we haven't yet, so thank you for the suggestion. We will get in touch with them. So is that Sina who does that?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
And you work with the schools and the high schools, correct? You advertise over there as well?
We are in contact with the schools and the high schools. They do have their own curriculums as well. And it's, we want to be sure that we are not stepping on toes. So it's kind of, we're, we are working with the Story County School District High Schools. We're able to implement up there, but so far, as of right now, we are not implementing within the Carson City School District High Schools or any other schools at this time.
Is there, what about the charter schools? Do you interact with them at all?
So we were working with Silver State Charter School, particularly in their middle school for probably about a year. I believe the middle school has now closed. We were not able to bring our comprehensive curriculum to the high school as we were hoping at one time. However, we're hoping that maybe someday we may be able to change that.
Valerie? Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But I understand you're not working with the high schools and such because they already have programs already embedded in.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Within our tobacco program, I don't know if any of you have seen the ad that has aired on major television stations talking about secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. This is an ad that we've collaborated with Washoe County Health District and the state on. And currently, we in Carson City do not have any complexes that are smoke-free. We're working on getting some. We've ran into some different roadblocks working on that. And I just want to put out a request for help if any of you know any of these complex managers or owners, that you can help us get in contact with them and maybe even get, you know, a building within a complex that's smoke-free. So I'm just asking for your help on that.
You mind?
Just parenthetically, there is a great need among folks. It's one of the things that people look for in housing, is this a smoke-free complex for me, for my children? And unfortunately, because we don't have any in Carson City, we're really regarding it as a, as a public health need to try to establish that at some point.
And we've had a couple of individuals that have contacted us that have, they have serious health issues and they need this type of housing. And we really would like to help them instead of having to tell them that the only place near us is Washoe County. So any help, we would greatly appreciate.
Well, there was just an incident here in Carson City where a gentleman was on a Well, there was just an incident here in Carson City where a gentleman was on oxygen, and he was a smoker. So it is, there is a need for it. Just out of curiosity, I'm just wondering if you've read the article in the Nevada Appeal about Carson City, how we rank as a health-wise, if you maybe can address any of that?
I was going to address that, right? I'm not going to go into great detail, but I was going to address that at the end of my... And then, so April 4th through the 10th is National Public Health Week. We will be organizing some events. We're actually going to extend it to be a month. So we'll have events throughout April, and geared towards public health. And then Jim, as you alluded to, so there was, the county health rankings got rolled out yesterday. And I gave some of the handouts to definitely the Board of Health, and to our city manager. And as you can see from the article, we didn't rank all that great as our health. We definitely have work to do. We've got our next...
Nikki, can I interrupt you a second?
Yeah.
How much of that, though, is due to the fact that we're the regional healthcare center? So people come here because they're, they need treatment?
Sadly, we can't blame it on that, because these are...
You didn't do it now, you didn't take it.
I know, I know, but I would like to say that. But these are tracked by zip codes for areas of residence. So if somebody comes in to Carson Town Hospital, and from Douglas County, it's not considered a Carson City patient, it's considered a Douglas County person. We will discuss these in more depth. This was just presented, actually, yesterday, was revealed yesterday. And we will discuss this in more depth at the next meeting. But I think, to me, the take-home message is that as a public health entity, we need to concentrate more of our efforts on chronic disease prevention and control than we have been able to in the past. Because this is where Carson City residents seem to be suffering disproportionately to the rest of the state.
Yes, Dr. Pinter, I think it'd be fair to point out, this is a very complex issue, and I want to point out that if you look at the rankings, and you try and draw a nexus between our Health and Human Services, and the efforts that we put forth in the community, and our county rankings, it is way more complicated than that. For example, we provide public health, we provide much of Douglas County's HHS. Douglas County is number one, Carson is number 12. So basically, the same staff and supervision is providing Health and Human Services for two counties, one is number one, and one is number 12. It's way more complex than just the numbers may suggest in terms of, you know, trying to quantify a community's health in terms of a number.
And just as a general comment, too, we can't see the raw data to know whether we're between number one and number 12, there might only be a half a point of difference.
Good point.
So I think it's important that the community not overreact to the fact, oh, wow, we're 12th, because it may only be, we could affect five patients and change the answer. So I'd like to put that in, too, that we look to see what critical area that we may need to work on, and what can we concentrate an effort to make that improvement.
Well, and I'd like to suggest as well, how the data is gathered is another issue that needs to be addressed also.
And those are some very good points, and this is, when you're looking at these county health rankings, it's not just the work that we're doing there in the Health Department, it's the community as a whole. And there's many different facets to that. And, you know, we are getting ready to do our next Community Health Needs Assessment. And so this will, you know, also be looked at in that. And again, doing that Community Health Needs Assessment, is it bringing in many different organizations and services throughout the community? So this is not just within the Health Department, this is, this is the community as a whole. And Supervisor Bagwell, how you had spoke about the data, I'm encouraging all of you and the public to get on to the County Health Rankings website. You can drill down into that data in there, and it's www-countyhealthrankings.org. And we definitely can put that on our website, so individuals have that link. But in, I did pass to the board members, so that they can review it, the information that was given to us yesterday at the rollout. So I encourage you to look at that, and then we'll bring it back and talk about it some more in the future.
Well, and not to be too much of a negative Nellie, but when we look at adjacent states, Utah is a very healthy state compared with Nevada. Even the top two ranking counties in our state are only as healthy as the medium to bottom counties in adjacent states. So it tells me that we have work to do in Nevada, not just in Carson City.
And that concludes my presentation.
Madam President, can I raise an issue here that's along these lines? You've probably read that I received a petition recently with respect to removing processed meat from school lunches. I did receive such a petition on Thursday, or this past Tuesday, I think. Let me just read that. It says, "As shown below, a substantial body of scientific evidence analyzed by government agencies and public health organizations attributes the consumption of processed meat to significantly increase cancer risk. Critically, a recent review by the World Health Organization provides new evidence that processed meat products are carcinogenic to humans. Nevada ranks number four for colorectal deaths in the United States." And then the end of the petition says this, "The Physicians Committee, which put this petition out, therefore requests that I, Mayor Crowell, protect the health and well-being of Carson City's children by removing processed meat products from all breakfasts and lunches served in public schools, and replacing them with healthful options. It's not my intention yet to bring this type of matter before the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Health, because I think that this is, rests primarily within the jurisdiction of the public school district, which is its own jurisdictional entity. And I know, I've talked to the Superintendent of Schools about it, I know he's looking into it as well. But I'd like your folks', the Health Department's, kind of recommendation as to, you know, what you think that the mayor or the Board of Supervisors can do. I'm not certain they really understand the distinction of what the mayor can and can't do. I mean, it's nice, I don't mind protecting the health and welfare of all the kids.
You could do everything.
The kids, but unfortunately, I don't have that kind of power. But, so, I'll give that to you. Doc, I can give that to you, or to Nikki, and you can let me know what you think, okay?
Could that potentially be a joint meeting when we have at the Board of Trustees? And our health component of that?
Yeah, I think everybody's kind of looking into it right now, so.
That'd be good for our joint meeting.
Well, I think it's part of a larger discussion about getting healthy food into and away from the current providers. I think it's part of a much larger discussion.
I really agree with that. From the standpoint of, nobody tells you that processed meat is good for you, just like nobody tells you that smoking is good for you. But the larger, the larger problem, except possibly one member, the larger problem is nutrition for the schools. And so we could address it bit by bit, but I think it's, it's one of those chronic disease issues again.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion for acceptance of the report.
I move to accept the Director's Report with feedback and direction given by the Board to staff on Carson City Health and Human Services activities.
Motion and second received. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Report is accepted. We will go on to item 26E, which, right? No, did I jump? Jump? Yeah, I jumped. C. Oh, Valerie, you get to tell us, now that your, her blood pressure has come down from the site visit, you get to tell us what happened.
Good morning. For the record, Valerie Quape, Carson City Health and Human Services. So I just wanted to start out with, as you're aware, our site visit was February 9th through 12th, and it went, I'm sorry, 9th through 10th, and it went very, very well, much better than we had anticipated. What I'm reporting today is actually based off of what they call an exit interview, which was the last event of the site visit itself. We have not yet received our official report, after talking to our accreditation specialist, who is the Fab staff member who has been assigned to us. We should be receiving that report next week, so we just missed it. I was really hoping to get something a little bit more substantial to you guys, but we'll just have to go with this. So, and that, when we do receive that report, that's when we'll have, like, the official scores per measure for each one of those 97 measures, and see how we stacked up. Again, within that report, there will not be any sort of mention as to whether or not we should, or recognition as to whether or not we should be accredited, but at least we'll have some good, more quantitative measure as to how we did. All right, so, next slide, please. Oh, first one, go back one. There we go. Okay. So one of the general comments that our site visit team lead has, was that he wanted to say that we have the three L's at Carson City Health and Human Services. So first of all, we do have a culture that supports learning and education. So first off, he wanted to mention that we have a really exceptional workforce development plan. So I would like to kind of commend our Workforce Development Committee, headed by Sandy Warko, in developing that plan and keeping the ball rolling on that. That's been really wonderful. Also, they mentioned that we have a culture that supports staff in continuing with their education, and that's also another really positive thing. We are a learning, or we are a lean organization, and they said that it was obvious that we are doing a lot with comparatively lean resources to other organizations. From there, we are also a leading organization. So we were described by our partners as kind of convening community members and community representatives into the same room, and getting the ball rolling on different conversations regarding community health, and how different aspects and different sectors really are able to work together. So that was really great. They also mentioned that we share our leadership role with the community members. So we're not coming down as the Health Department, and we're not dictating as to this is what needs to be done, but we are sharing that leadership correctly with other organizations. And so they were commending us for that as well. All right, so, starting out with our areas of strength, they said it was obvious that we have a culture of continuous quality improvement, or CQI. With that, it's really stitched throughout our entire organization, and not necessarily based on one or two programs. I'd also like to commend Ronnie Gallus, our clinic manager. They have a really, really fantastic and substantial quality improvement system within the Clinical Services Division. But it is something that is growing and becoming more substantial within each division, so that's really exciting to see. We also have, again, a strong workforce development plan, and then also, and this is one of the most important things, is that our plans that we develop, so our Community Health Improvement Plan, our Strategic Plan, they're not just plans that were developed and sit on a shelf, but they're actionable. They include input from other community members and representatives, they include input from all levels of our staff, which is fairly rare, apparently, or that was kind of the flavor that was given. So we were excited about that. And that we review them on a regular basis, that we want to keep them updated with the activities that we have going on here in the community, and make sure that everything is in alignment with not only our resources, but also resources that are out in the community as well. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Our next area of strength was the, he had a thing for alliterations, so the multiple Cs, so collaboration, coalition, collegiality, community, and capacity building. And so something that they heard from our partners was that the process of the development of the Community Health Assessment in 2010 through 2012, and then the Community Health Improvement Plan, was something that helped the community, not just our organization, but also helped break down silos between different organizations. And when we say silos, I know that's kind of a buzzword. So a silo is, as you know with a grain silo, it's that one container. So silos in communication is where different organizations may be doing their own thing and not communicating with others. So by breaking down those silos, we're able to make sure that we're not duplicating services, that we're able to improve referral processes, and basically better leverage all available resources within our community, and really help streamline processes. Another thing that our partners brought up was the ability to call our Director, or any of our division managers, if they needed anything, and get an answer right away, which is also something that is apparently, although we feel that is something that should be standard, apparently that's not always standard in some organizations. So that was exciting as well. And they mentioned that we really built a public health community within our, within Carson City. So our areas for improvement, because we can't always be perfect, and I'd like to say that none of these were really surprises. And so when we're talking about areas for improvement, areas from strength, they're also, remember that they're basing all of these judgments on documentation that was developed and submitted by May of 2015. So it's been almost a year. So we've already been able to address some of these, at least in some way. So that's the good news. One of them was the ability to perform general data collection analysis. One of the problems is we don't have a designated data person that does this full-time, like some organizations do. However, we have been able to bring on a staff member who was at first an intern, is now a contracted disease investigator, and she's also been able to do some of this data collection stuff, particularly that associated with our Community Health Assessment processes that we're implementing this spring. And so that's been incredibly helpful. It should be noted that this is not an issue that we are experiencing only in Carson City, but this is an issue throughout the entire state. So it's something that we're going to be seeing addressed in some more statewide initiatives, and by our, the newly formed Nevada Public Health Training Center, which has been housed within the University of Nevada Reno as well. Which should address some of that strengthening skills within our own staff members' aspect as well. Associated with this is the collection of data specific to subpopulations. So one of the things about hard-to-reach populations is they're hard to reach, and we, that's just the way it is. They noticed, they wanted to let us know that they had noted that we were doing our best to reach out to community organizations that represented some of these hard-to-reach populations, but what they really want to see is us actually getting in and speaking directly and working directly with those hard-to-reach populations. They understand that may not always be completely possible, because they're hard to reach for a reason, but that they would like to see a little bit more substance to that aspect. So that's something that we're addressing in our Community Health Assessment process this spring as well. We're hoping to do some focus groups with the Hispanic population, with the, we have like four different population groups, I'm looking at Taylor, because she's a part of that committee as well. Veterans, senior population, and then any others that may be appropriate.
Just out of curiosity, do you have, on staff, do you have people who speak Hispanic, or are they bilingual, or, and is your literature printed in Spanish as well?
We have a limited, a limited number of staff members. Most of them are based out of the clinic, and I think we have a couple in Human Services as well, within the WIC program area, who are bilingual. And then Taylor can speak to the literatures.
Taylor Radke, for the record, the Designated Public Information Officer for Carson City Health and Human Services. We do have an internal marketing and communications policy that addresses communicating with hard-to-reach, as far as low health literacy and publishing materials in Spanish in addition to English. Anything that would be educational, a fact sheet, a flyer for a specific program, we would be also publishing it in Spanish.
Well, as well as publishing it in language that is appropriate for some lower levels of education.
Correct. Our policy addresses a sixth-grade reading level or below.
On the website, do you have anything for the bilinguals?
Our website actually flips into Spanish in our content header. You can hit the button, and all of the text will translate.
I just, as a, as a comment, I think that the health agency does as well, or better than probably any of the other local agencies in providing services in alternative languages, Spanish primarily, but others as well. It's been a real... It's been a real area to me of excellence.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I'm glad that we got to clarify that. Let's see. Where are we? I think we missed, can you go back a slide? Okay, perfect. Another thing that we've done internally is we've developed an, a data committee. And so what we're doing with this data committee is we're addressing some of these issues such as staff training, collection, making sure that we're all kind of on the same page internally, and working on strategies to address a lot of these disparities. All right. The next one would be closing the loop on quality improvement. And so that would be reporting and gaining feedback on the results from these quality improvement issues that may or may not affect the public, or they may just be internal processes that don't necessarily affect the public, but closing the loop and looking at what people who are stakeholders actually feel are improvements or not improvements, and if we need to move forward from that. Part of this is because our quality improvement system is still kind of in its infancy, and we're still working some bugs out. But this was some really great feedback to get from them as well. One specific example given was to improve communication on the activities from the strategic plan and the Carson City Health Improvement Plan out to the community, whether that would be doing, posting something on the website or doing a Facebook post, et cetera, but making it a little bit more public. All right, so the next steps. The completed report, when we get it, it will also be sent at the very same time to the Public Health Accreditation Board back in Virginia. We were told that we are likely to be put on the agenda for their April 27th meeting. So we're really hoping that that happens because that's a little bit earlier than we were anticipating, and quite frankly, we're tired of waiting. It's only been five years, you know? Only the reporters used to make the decision. So there are, the site visitors are not present at the time of the decision. We can't have anybody call in and vouch for us or anything like that. So it's, that helps give a little bit more objectivity to the decision itself. So given that we're on the agenda for the April 27th meeting, we should know beginning of May, maybe middle of May. We are also probably going to receive some sort of note as to the accreditation decision, as to whether or not we're accredited before the official announcement is made. We are not allowed to make any sort of public announcement until the official press release is released by the Public Health Accreditation Board. So we won't be discussing that at meetings until that time. Although if you see me walking around with a huge smile on my face, that's probably, probably in good shape. All right, our next steps. So we have been in contact with the Nevada Public Health Training Center to see what types of resources they may have for our staff development in the area of data collection and analysis. The good news is that through their grants that they're operating under, there may be some really fantastic free resources, which that's exciting, that our staff may be able to use. So that would be one area that we can explore. We're also working with some of our team members to strategize as to how we can do that best, how we can best close that loop on the QI. And also reporting a progress on our external plans as well in a way that is efficient internally because we are lean. Also, that is meaningful to the community members, and that has appropriate data and kind of fills in some of those gaps. We're also moving forward with a lot of the projects that we've been working on since we submitted our documentation, which also should help address any areas of concern that will be brought up by the Public Health Accreditation Board. So a quick note on the accredited versus not accredited status. I've been doing a little bit more research and digging into some of the resources. And I believe at our last Board of Health meeting, the mayor asked how that works if we're given an action plan. Do they hand down kind of this, you must do this, or this, or this? And is that going to be something that's reasonable? Apparently, the scoop is that we will be either accredited or given an action plan. When given, and given an action plan, we're actually given a mandate to develop an action plan. And so we will be given different areas of weakness to address. We will be responsible for developing strategies to address those weaknesses. So that's good news. That can, that means that we can put it in a context of completing activities that are actually within our reach instead of outside of our reach. And we have 90 days to develop that plan. After that plan has been submitted to Fab and has been approved, we then have another year to complete those actions. So that's kind of the scoop on that. So I wanted to report back on the, on what I had learned in that regard. I would like to thank our partner organizations who came to our partner meeting. Between talking to representatives of our governance and then talking to our partners, by the time they left, they were glowing. Our site visit team members were absolutely glowing. Kathy Bartos from Partnership Carson City, Dr. John Packham from the UNR School of Medicine Office of Rural Health. He's also the director of the, of statewide initiatives within that office. Rhoda Rosashi, the Director of the Nevada Public Health Foundation. Diane Rush, who is with Carson Tahoe Health. Suzie Whitman with Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health. Jim Fried, also with Carson Tahoe Health. Richard Stokes from Carson City School District. Julia Peak with the Nevada Department of Public and Behavioral Health, our state health agency. Jim Peckham from FISH, and Dan Dungeness from Carson City Public Works. They all did a fantastic job of, well, not only they came, we were excited about that because these are very busy people who are difficult to get into one room. So thank you so much to them for taking time out of their schedules. But they apparently painted a really positive picture of our community as a whole and not just our organization. So that was very exciting. I'd also like to thank members of the Board of Health who were present. Thank you for taking the time to come to the site visit and also for taking the time out of your days to attend or complete the trainings through Fab. I know that was maybe not the most fun thing. So I really appreciate it. And thank you very much for your time, energy, and support.
Did we help for her?
I'm pretty sure you helped. They were pretty impressed.
Do any of, Mr. Shirk, or Mr. Crowell, or Karen, do you have any comments that you wanted to make about your part of the process?
Let the mayor speak.
Well, I don't know, but I, I often take him out to dinner.
You're not supposed to do that.
No, I didn't. I have no partner. Thank you, Valerie. Do we have to, no, okay, good. Thank you. So, thank you. Oops, thank you very much. Where am I? C, D? Yes. The annual report, Mrs. Anker, has appeared. And we will have Ms. Taylor, a resident guru of all things communication.
Again, for the record, Taylor Radke, Public Health Preparedness Planner and the Designated Public Information Officer for the Health Department.
When we talk about operating lean, do you see that she has three jobs?
I'm pleased to present the fourth annual report that the Health Department has published. As you review this report, you may notice that we've taken quite a different approach. And part of that has to do with our accreditation efforts and really looking at data-driven performance. And we can write narratives all day long that say we do these things. But does our data say that we actually do these things? And so we included that information. We also referenced the databases that these, these measures come from. So some of the things we touched on, outside of just reporting on reportable diseases from Epi and some clinical services data, we, we tried to capture some from each of our divisions. So Nikki has a few of those that she'd like to share.
Okay, just really briefly, I'm gonna, as a supporting document, you got a copy of the annual report. As soon as you guys review it, and if you have any feedback, we'll get it published on our website. We're not going to print it. We'll have it published on our website. So anybody from the public can come on and look at it. We've got Dr. Pentars, she's got her report in there. I've got a brief report in there. I just want to make mention of the highlights of 2015. You know, we've highlighted our accreditation efforts. We had a Nevada Day condom campaign. And then, as we've talked many times in the Board of Health, that we've got our remote area medical. And as Taylor indicated, we, we highlighted each division. So please take a look at that. And again, we welcome any input before we get this published. I want to also just draw your attention to Human Services. We recently became a coordinated entry agency. We've got information in the annual report on that. Now, that just started in December 2015. And we've, have talked about that here at the Board of Health also.
And just to add to that, Mary Jane wanted me to provide on her behalf that if you look at that, 63%, I think it is, that were referred out, the other number is really the people that they provide, either provide one-time or long-term services to, or did not show up for their appointment. So that would be what they manage. Everything else is really representing that everyone that comes in, they try to connect with services, even if it means that it's out of our means at the Health Department.
And that, that is the goal of this effort. So, is to find the best resources for individuals.
Nikki, can I ask you a question? If you can go back a slide to the promoting health among teens. Of the participants, there's 58, if I'm reading everything correctly. Do we break this apart? How much funding is set aside for, for this particular program? Do you have any idea of what it costs to run this program in particular versus all other ones?
Valerie can speak to it too, but through our adolescent health, that is a grant that, so the grant, it's grant funding that we receive to run this program.
Again, Valerie Quape, Carson City Health and Human Services, this time as the coordinator for these programs. We, for the promoting health among teens program, which is our absence program, we're running at about $118,000. And that covers a good portion, I believe it's three quarters of my salary, part of one of our part-time nurse facilitators, and then another part of another one of our facilitators. So it's mostly salary funding. We do have a little bit of money within that grant for incentives, which are kept down to, I think we're at 35, value of up to $35 per participant if they complete the program. So it's not like anybody can show up for the first day and they get a $35 gift card to somewhere or whatever, and then they can leave.
And Valerie, clarify, or correct me if I'm wrong, but this program is not just given in Carson City?
Correct. And we're actually having a more difficult time getting this program implemented within Carson City itself. We're actually...
It's also offered in some adjacent counties. So that, that $118,000 is, is partly allocated to Carson City?
Correct. We also receive, I believe we got $42,000 this year for our Be Proud, Be Responsible program, which is our comprehensive funding, and that is also largely salary funding.
Out of the $118,000, how much is allocated specifically to Carson City?
We do not have anything specifically allocated to Carson City. So it is dedicated to our staff members who are Carson City Health and Human Services staff, but we do not have that portioned out by county of residents as far as time spent, because ultimately, we're trying to get the ball rolling on these programs. And we haven't been able, although we've been working on engaging the community within Carson City for approximately four years now, coming up on five years, there hasn't been the appetite for it. And so because a lot of the surrounding areas have a little bit more of an appetite, we are implementing the curriculum in the surrounding counties. If we are able to partner with an organization that does have the appetite for it here in Carson City, we would love to. This would be, as Carson City Health and Human Services, this is our priority area, or is one of our priority areas. And also, it's a lot easier to have a, I mean, logistically implement the program here.
So when you say someone to have the appetite for it, describe what that means to me. I don't, I don't follow this logic here.
Okay. So a lot of it comes down to, what we found is that if we hold a session that is just open to the public for open registration, we have had very little luck with that. And because we don't want to keep repeating cycles that aren't very effective, what we've done is, where we've had the most success, is partnering with local youth agencies. So thank you for your recommendation, Supervisor Bagwell, for teaming up with the library. By implementing within another partner organization, recruiting that way, we're able to get participants and actually make the most of our staff time as well. It's more difficult to find partner organizations who are willing to implement or help coordinate that here in Carson City than it is in other places. Part of that is, although teen pregnancy is a persisting issue in Carson City and other places, for some reason, there's still a lot of concern over, unsubstantiated concerns over talking to kids about sexual intercourse. If you talk to kids about sexual intercourse, it does not link back to increased sexual behavior, particularly if you're talking about an absence program that is evidence-based. And so that's one of the difficulties that we keep running into within our programming. And that is also experienced by a lot of the other state sub-grantees who are implementing these programs and others throughout the state. So it is not just this community itself, but that's where we as an organization are really hitting our barriers.
Have you reached out to like Food for Thought or organizations locally?
We have reached out to several youth-centered organizations. Coordination is, is an issue. One of our problems is that because we are, it is an evidence-based intervention, we cannot cut out, cut, like cut and chop the intervention itself. We have to deliver the entire program. So, and the program is, particularly the absence program, is eight hours long. It's eight one-hour modules. So we have to coordinate with our partners as to how we're going to implement that in a way that we can actually get the kids there, keep them interested. We can't cut out parts of the conversations that talk about, like for example, we talk about different forms of sexual activity and the sexual risks that are involved in that, including STI and HIV infection. Some partners aren't comfortable with that. We, we can't cut that out. We're not allowed to.
Is there any, have you reached out to the Boys and Girls Club? Is there literature over there for them, for their?
We had partnered with the Boys and Girls Club. However, because there were some parents who were upset that we were talking to 13- through 15-year-olds about sexual activity at all, and we were just implementing the absence program, we were asked to not go there for at least a year. And I mean, if you, if you look at the evidence base at 13- through 15, absence-only education is not what kids those, of those ages should be receiving. They should be receiving comprehensive information, which includes not only information about absence and absence skills, but also the correct use of contraceptants, contraceptives, their types, et cetera.
Out of the age group 13 to 15, how many are, or out of both age groups, how many are Carson City residents?
It depends on where we implement our program. We've, when we were able to implement, even at Silver State Charter School in the middle school, a lot of those participants were actually residents of Lyon County because they would travel into town for the program. So it, it's a lot of those bedroom communities that we've been able to access, so to speak.
You don't have a count of how many?
I do have, I actually do have that data. It did not make the annual report, but I do have that information, and I would be happy to send that along. We do keep track of county of residents. Additionally, with our Be Proud, Be Responsible program, because we were able to implement at Rite of Passage Schools, we were able to track not only the county residents for the entire state, but also which ones were from out of state.
I think you guys do a great job. Don't get me wrong. I'd like to, when you come with these numbers, I'd like to have the numbers broken apart to show exactly how many Carson City residents, whether they're minors, seniors, veterans, that we're actually helping, community-wise, number-wise. I think that's the important number that's not included or separated, however you want to put this, in this report, or the previous reports. I think it needs to be Carson City. I think that's our main goal. I think you helping other counties, great. But I'm more concerned with Carson City. So if you could, in the future, have those numbers, that'd be great. I'm good.
Supervisor Shirk, all of the reports in the past have been specific to Carson City only. This is the, the first report that we've looked at the broad scope of our programs, and I think that was an accreditation-based But the annual report is just a summary of everything we do. One of the things we're looking at with our data committee is doing individual data profiles for specific programs where we can encompass more of those things broken out by jurisdiction and provide more detail. And it's certainly something we can also do to our annual report. One of the things that came into consideration is that our annual report has been extremely lengthy in the past. lengthy in the past. So, we're trying to keep it down to a page limit where the public will remain engaged in what we're trying to say. So, definitely something we'll take into consideration in how we can continue to share that information, how's it on our website, when those data profiles become available for each program.
How about an opportunity to keep it short like this that you've done on the website, but then a drill down if somebody wants the specific by-county breakdown? So, you keep the overall report this way, but they could hit the link and see it more detailed. Because I agree, you want to keep people engaged and shorter and simpler is better. But there may be, I don't know, health nuts out there that want to drill into the specifics. So, maybe just drill-down version.
Yeah, that's great. This report obviously is not perfect. It's our first step in this direction, so we can make those changes as we move forward.
Very nice job. And if I can just add a couple of comments. So, in speaking about the barriers that we've had with providing our absence programs in Carson City, that's why we're taking the strategy in having some classes over spring break here in Carson City. And then, when we're looking at some of our services that we provide, yes, we've got our confines of Carson City, but the public that lives in Lyon County, say Dayton and Douglas County, there's not always those lines. They still come into Carson City for different things. So, that's one thing that we keep into mind also. So, I just wanted to highlight, we also had included our QI, continuous quality improvement, our model on here on how we do that. And again, any other comments that you have even after the meeting, let us know and before we go ahead and publish this to the website. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. I think that's a nice segue into our last item of business, which is Dustin is going to present one of the later, latest quality improvement projects that was just completed. Once Nikki finds the slides.
Oh, there.
Good morning, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dustin Booth. I wanted to provide you a very quick update on a QI project related to our food safety training and testing program. We utilize the plan due check cycle for quality improvement. Our planning phase for this was the assessment of our in-house testing. The due phase was the research of a company and the implementation of an online testing. And the checked act phase was the is-yong going evaluation. In the spring of 2015, we developed a survey that was handed out to the individuals who were taking the test. The results of the survey showed that they wanted a test that they could take at any time. We limited it to Tuesdays only. Wanted to have the ability to be in other languages besides English and also have timely results. Our test was a very manual process, so it took time to grade that. Our internal goals were to have the ability for updated materials, since it was an in-house test, it was labor-intensive to update those on a regular basis. Have the ability for multiple languages. To be ANSI accredited, because that is a state law requirement. And increased analytics, since it was all in-house, we didn't have, you know, ease of keeping track of the scores. So, after looking at a couple of different online testing companies, we chose statefoodsafety.com. In July of 2015, we stopped offering our test at the Health Department and went to the online system. The system can be accessed via our website. We've increased the average number of passing tests per month by nine. So, the previous year was about 11 passes per month. Now, we're at 20. Through the last six months, about 20 passes per month. People are allowed to take two tests before they have to pay for it again. Also, our field staff can validate a card or certificate in the field by doing an online portal. So, that would sort of eliminate the fraudulent ones that could be out there.
Dustin, do they have different versions of the test then? So, if you take it and you fail the first time and you take it again, it's not the same test, right?
Correct.
It's different questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. They also have an alcohol awareness class two, Sheriff. They have an online version of an alcohol awareness class two, this company does. So, now we are in our ongoing evaluation phase. So, we're currently working with the vendor to deploy a customer satisfaction survey specific to our test to see if the education of the test are meeting the client's needs. And we're also exploring, expanding our tests for a food protection manager class. So, what we currently have available is a food handler class, but we do, you know, food safety education in the workforce is very important, and a food manager is the next level. And those are, this company offers that ability. So, we will be, that'll be a different QI project, but we'll be looking at offering that in the future.
Can I ask on that? So, are you talking about the initial food certification or recertification or both?
Okay, so, the, so the current test is just a food handler test. And that test is just initial certification and would also be the same one for recertification.
No, I meant for the next level.
The next level up is actually a food protection manager class. And that is in...
Runs for five years. And so, are you going to do recerts?
So, we do utilize this company in regards to that. And so, they provide the online, so this is an online environment so that you could study at your own pace. A lot of the other classes that are available currently out there, you have to take like three days off of work and devote eight hours. And it's expensive. You devote eight hours a day and then you take the test at the end. This would allow for a self-paced study online. You still currently would have to engage in an in-person testing because that's just the way this test is done. There's no online version of that.
More like a proctor?
Yes, more like a proctor. So, we're working with them. So, that'll be a different QI project to try to get more local availability because currently, all those proctors' exams are available only in Reno.
So, I think one of the things that Dustin's been working on, and probably members here could give him some input, is to, would that be a useful service to offer? And, you know, how much of his time should he devote to exploring that, I guess, is one of the questions. So, I mean, if the impression is that it would be a useful service to offer, then he wants to continue. Or if there's other resources that you can mention to Dustin, say, why don't you ask these people, you know, how many of their folks they might want to send to the managers' course? That would be useful information as well.
Well, I can only speak for myself, from experience, but I actually had all of my staff go to the certified, all the way up. Because to me, the health of the restaurant and the food that you're handling is more important than at the handler level. So, I thought it was important that all of my staff actually go to the certified. So, I would appreciate, or I think most of us in Carson City as residents too, would appreciate that everyone handling food was a little bit more than the basics. So, if it was offered where they could do it at different shifts than they work and things like that, it would be tremendous to bring the health of the entire community up. So, I think it would be great.
I would agree with that as well, Dustin. I think it's worthwhile to pursue.
I love your last slide. I love your last slide. How many?
What is that?
Meat, it's steak.
Unprocessed. It's processed meat.
Oh, yeah. You're getting hungry, Mayor. Looks like a donut to him. Thank you. Appreciate that report on a very timely quality improvement project. And I will now entertain public comment. Hearing none, we will adjourn until May 19th of whatever year it occurs. Thank you.
We're going to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors will take up this item, number 30, on the agenda, non-action items. Any board member bringing up non-action items? Supervisor Shirk, Jim, go.
A couple of things. I recently learned that part of the one-eighth of a cent sales tax is using, is being used for a grant, matching grant fund for relocation of trees along Carson Street. I checked with the DA, and according to NRS, it is within the boundaries of the NRS and it meets the criteria. I would like to know who obtained the grant, if it is a grant, and who signed the document that will allow the funding for this through the one-eighth of a cent sales tax. And here's my concern. It's for the taxpayers, as any amount under $24,999.99 falls under the radar, and there is no limit to the amount the city staff, if it is city staff, can obligate these taxes as a funding mechanism without first giving consideration of the overall budget or asking for board approval. Usage of tax dollars under these types of parameters could be endless, and we have no control in place to oversee or monitor these types of usage. And I just would like to have something or some control because if it's under the $24,000, it could be utilized in such a fashion, I don't know if it's good or bad, but I would like some background on it as we move forward. Taking a page from Ms. Bagwell's asking for an agenda item, I'm going to request an agenda item as well. And I hope I meet the guidelines as I know them to be. Maybe there's something new, I don't know. But I am requesting to have an agenda item for discussion purposes only about moving the Department of Alternative Sentencing from under the city managed authority to that of our judges, where I think it would be a better fit. Again, this is a request for an agenda item for discussion purposes only. And under these same parameters, I would also like to request an agenda item for discussion purposes only about should a board member request staff to forward their answers and their questions to other board members, that they will be allowed to do so. Now, I'm only asking for a discussion only. And this is, this will allow me to hear discussion from other board members, and then I could ask a board member, based upon this discussion, if they would be interested in having their name on, as a second on the dotted line, so we can have an agenda item that would allow discussion and a vote and a motion. Now, I do want to state for the record, as a test, I put an agenda packet together under this very concept for discussion purposes only, and it took less than eight minutes, start to finish. So, for that reason, I believe I have fulfilled and complied with all the rules and regulations that govern how an agenda item may be brought forward to the board. So, for that reason, I believe I should be granted the permission for these two agenda items for discussion purposes only. Thank you for your time.
And I know this is just for non-action item purposes, but just for Food for Thought, the Director of DAS is statutorily appointed by the board, and I just want you to think about the whole separation of powers where you have the judicial branch and the executive branch and what kind of problems might arise from that organizational structure that you're recommending, but that's for later.
Okay. Laurie, go.
Just a general comment, since some of the Health Department is still here. I just really want to commend you guys for all the work on accreditation and changes that we've seen that you're undertaking. I think it's a wonderful public service and maybe sometimes we forget to say thank you. So, I wanted to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? No, but I'll give you a copy of what the Physicians Committee sent out. So, then just give me your ideas. I mean, okay, thanks. Because I know it's a school issue, but give me your ideas of what, if you think that we should weigh in, something like that. Okay, all right. All right. Anything else before we recess until 2:00?
Get a real lunch today. We get real lunch today.
Holy smokes. Yeah, it's good.
Help me clean it up.
It's going to be an easy afternoon, folks, so we might.
If this morning's any indication, we will.
All right. Let's be in recess until 2:00. Thanks.